Okay.
You ready?
Yes.
So, good morning, everyone. I would like to call the Calbright College Board of Trustees meeting to order this morning on July the 12th at 9:00 a.m., on the dot. And before the meeting gets started, I'd like the board liaison to review the meeting procedures and protocols. Terry.
Good, yes. Good morning, and thank you for joining us. I am Terry Lucas, board liaison at Calbright College. You can follow our meeting agenda on board docs. The link can be found on our website, calbright.org, under About Board of Trustees. For attendees who wish to make public comment, please use the Q&amp;A feature to address the board for up to three minutes. Public comment should be used to address today's agenda only. A reminder that this board meeting is being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you. So, would you please, at this point, call the roll?
Yes. Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Present.
Darius Anderson. Darius Anderson. Amy Costa.
Here.
Tom Epstein.
Here.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Here.
Jelena Grande.
Here.
Pam Haynes.
Here.
Kevin Hall.
Here.
Lieutenant Governor Elani Kounalakis.
Present.
Bill Rawlings.
Present.
Valerie Shaw.
Here.
Ulya Tarasova. Ulya Tarasova.
Here.
Las Villa Lobos. Believe he is not present today. And Jennifer Perry is not present today. Joseph Williams. We are ready to begin.
So, um, thank you for that. I'd like to begin with our pledge of allegiance. And I've asked trustee Anderson to lead us in that pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of your win nation. There's little justice for all.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, I do want to ask if there's any discussion that we need to have before we get into the agenda, any changes or any corrections to it. I don't see any hands raised or flailing around, so I will, I will assume that we're, we're, we're ready to go. Um, I'm going to start with my president's report. And, but before I do that, I want to welcome all of my colleagues, all of my, the board members, but in particular, I want to welcome back Felicia Escobar Correa. We haven't had your sage advice for the last couple of meetings, and we have been missing you. So, thank you so much. I'm so glad that you have been able to join us this morning. Um, I also want to, to begin my comments by thanking Calbright's executive staff, Calbright's faculty, Calbright's classified, for all of the work that has been done since our last meeting. We have been embroiled in budget negotiations. We have come through an audit. We have been in the process of hiring and realigning curriculum. And I want to just make public comment relative to the work that all of you have done. And we have not missed a beat. And I think that we need to stop and, and understand that we are building a new institution that we call Calbright. And everyone has gone beyond the call of duty to make certain that, that we continue to do that work of building the community, along with not only supporting it, but defending it. Uh, we, in this, in this agenda, it will reflect a number of issues that one, address some of the issues in the audit. But most importantly, this is a building, a continuation of the work that we, that we are doing. So, for example, we have on our agenda a student resolution, a commitment to student organization. Um, that's critically important. We want to make certain that the Calbright adult learners and students have voice, that they are empowered to be part of building this institution, this college. And so, we will be voting on that. We will also be voting on our academic Senate's resolution, which says that, um, in many ways, this is a collaboration, which is critically important. We cannot do this work without those who've vested their time, their professional development, all of those things to make certain that Calbright gets off to a wonderful start and that we build, we build back better. We build, and we build importantly on behalf and with the students and the Californians that we have in mind that will take advantage, hopefully, of the trainings that we, that we will be offering. Um, we've also been involved in the, in the budget process. And I want to give a special shout out and thanks to our governmental relations team, who, I think governmental relations teams across this state, in Sacramento, have had to spend in numerous hours. There is no nine to five in that kind of work. And I want to thank them for all of their efforts, because I think that ultimately, it, it will and has paid off. Um, and then I want to extend a thank you to all of the partners, who, when we asked for them to write letters, when we asked for them to be supportive of our budget items, that they came and they made certain that their voices were heard. And then I also want to recognize that one of the areas of the, of the audit itself was around procurement, contracting, and purchasing. And I want to give a shout out again to all of the work of everyone. I don't know if my colleagues had a chance to, to read that huge handbook, but I did most of that reading, and I can say that it's, it is extremely thorough. And we have a lot to be proud of that, that, that turnaround time of being, of being right on time relative to the things we need to do. So, I want to, again, thank everyone that was involved in that. Um, I also want to note, because I think that this isn't, this, this agenda is an important one. There are two other items. One of them is the student feedback process. And I think that Calbright is setting the, setting the, the bar for how we engage students in making certain that the processes that we are trying to put together, and put in place, are ones that they, they can thrive in, that they can get what they came to Calbright to get, which is training that's competency-based, that if there's glitches, that they have a voice in making certain that those glitches go away, and that those glitches go away in a timely manner. And I think that we will set the stage for so much work that can be, that, that can happen system-wide relative to that. We all care about supporting our students. One of the, one of the ways we do that is to hear their voices timely in a way that we can make changes. Calbright is doing that. And so, that, that, that part of the agenda, I'm hoping that we, we look at, and there may be questions, but I, I wanted to recognize that. And then I want to recognize something that, that actually surprised me, and that was the recognition of Juneteenth. I, I don't know who asked for that, but, um, someone who is African-descended, someone who has had American institutions, I, I, I recognize that that is symbolic, but I think it's an important symbolism that took two and a half years for the West to, for Texas in particular, but for many who were enslaved to, to realize that they were, that they, that we were free. Um, and I think that it goes a long way in this building of, of that recognition that is a national recognition. And so, I want to thank those who thought about it to, to recognize it. It, it, it is a joy, because these reforms are really about letting our students know and letting everyone know that we're working on these issues together, that nobody stands alone, that we are standing together around equity, around diversity, and about, and around inclusion. And so, I think that, 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 that piece of the recognition solidifies that and lets us know that we're all in this boat together as we work toward building, building a much more just California, a much more just United States. So, uh, in my closing, I, I do want to say this, and I don't want to close on a negative note. I want to close on a promising note, but I do want to say this. One of the things that has really, really challenged me during this time has been the recognition that there are those in, in powerful positions that either through, through, and I'm hoping through, I'm hoping it's through their ignorance, do not understand the importance of a Calbright. I'm hoping it's not, um, because, because they don't, because they really want to try to destroy something that is critically important, not only to the eight million Californians who really need some, need to know and learn about the, the, the work, how work is changing, and that there are, are training programs that will help them get good-paying jobs. I'm hoping it's not that. But I have been really challenged in trying to be kind in my thoughts, to be understanding in my thoughts, because I am there, that, that has really frustrated me. And so, I'm hoping that we are turning a page, and that, that folks will begin to understand the critical importance of a Calbright, for not just to, to just exist, because there is a need. And I want to thank my colleagues on the board, because I know that each one of you understands that vision and what our mission really is. And, and with that, I want to turn this over, let me get my notes. I want to turn this over to our president in her remarks. Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and members of the Board of Trustees. Similar to what Pam highlighted, I, I actually wanted to open today by sharing a bit more about our actual students. I have a few stories to share, and, and, you know, we, these are, these are samples, but we, we hear from our students every day about what they're faced with. And, you know, when David lost his mother to COVID, he also lost his motivation, and he felt very stuck. But when Calbright Student Success Team reached out to him to schedule regular check-ins, it actually reignited his commitment and set him back on track. He saw something was possible. Trinidad has been studying in our IT program, and when she's not commuting two hours a day to Riverside or to Venice to care for two parents in their, in the late stages of their life, she is connecting with our instructors and with our support staff to move her progress forward. Michael moved to Los Angeles with a new baby and a wife recovering from a very difficult pregnancy, and he was faced with spotty internet and no computer. An online college for him seemed like a fantasy, until Calbright provided a hotspot and a Chromebook, understood his needs, took the time to learn them. These are just a few of the stories that we actually hear from our students, and I, I highlight them, because they remain a critical reminder of the importance of the work we do, but also a recognition of how far our work has come. Much more detail will be provided in our upcoming August milestone report, but for today, I thought it was important to take a step back and to reflect on what it represents, a compilation of all that we've achieved, as, as well as how we've learned and grown together over the past year. I'm very proud of that progress, and excited and humbled by what lies ahead. I'm proud that we've met every single one of our statutory milestones, and that we're ahead of schedule for accreditation, that we've designed and validated for new programs to prepare students for in-demand careers, and that we've incorporated student feedback to give our students a better experience from the day they apply through their job search. But mostly, I'm, I am proud that we are giving the Davids and the Trinidads and the Michaels and so many other students the opportunity to pursue their dreams within the constraints of their real lives. And I'm not confused that these aren't success stories yet, but they are proof of concept, a snapshot of who we're here to serve. And they're really the ones that best tell the story of why there's such a critical need for Calbright. And as you know, we've shared, we've faced our share of skepticism. Some of that has been inherent to being an ambitious new idea. Some of that stems from early missteps in the work that we've spent a great deal of time and effort to correct. But a lot of it is really rooted in misconception about the challenge we're taking and the approach that we're taking to, to address it. In the age of COVID, I often get asked this question about why we need an online community colleges, when lots of colleges have, you know, kind of quote, "gone online." And while it's true that over the past year, institutions of all kinds have put content online, what we've seen is that simply putting content online doesn't erase the inequities. And if we're not careful, it can actually exacerbate them. So, just putting the content in the cloud doesn't help you learn without a computer or a strong internet connection. It doesn't help you get back on track when you've stopped making progress. It doesn't make a rigid semester schedule fit between long hours and job demands and childcare and eldercare that so many of our students are confronting. Students like Trinidad, Michael, and David are the proof that we need more than just online content, that we need to actually be focused on delivering more for California's working adults, and actually pushing the boundaries of traditional options that aren't structured for these life's realities. You know, we know these learners need flexible self-paced program and access to targeted individualized supports, and they need an institution that's going to root for them by first actually seeing them, and then, more importantly, perhaps recognizing that they are filled with talents and capabilities. They already bring that to the table. And they need a team that's committed to being responsive, to meeting them where they are, and that's in constant pursuit of ways in which that work can be done better. In grappling with the realities confronting adult learners, you know, we are hardly alone in working towards solutions in this space. We're a part of a growing number of organizations who recognize that not just our educational institutions, but other parts of our social and economic systems have to work better in this post-COVID recovery period to prevent a deeper hardlining of inequities by race, by region, by income. And consistent with the anchor laid down by your strategic vision, the upcoming fiscal year will follow our strategy forward to collaborate with entities spanning from regions and localities, other colleges and universities, workforce and economic development organizations, worker organizations, unions, industry and employers, and those organizations that are working on the ground to solve some of these shared challenges that are experienced by those who've been hardest hit by the pandemic. I wanted to mention a, a highlight of that. Two weeks ago, we launched a new partnership with the National Association of Workforce Boards, Future Fit AI, and an inaugural set of education providers that is focused on a pilot called Workforce Compass, essentially an effort to support job seekers with career exploration, rescaling, and job placement support that's personalized through local labor market data and artificial intelligence. And it's an important point, because our work is attracting interest, not just in California, but also nationally, because there's a growing movement of organizations that are kind of converging around this common set of challenges that can only be solved collaboratively. You know, we are all wrestling with this question of how do we best help workers get off between the seesaw of unemployment and insecure employment? How do we best actually assess the skills that they come to us with and provide opportunities for us to give targeted in-demand skills to supplement that? And how do we best position them for that labor market transition and success? And, and the recognition is that we all hold slightly different piece of the puzzle that's required to solve these challenges. So, there's no single institution that is the silver bullet solution, but the commitment that we have with, with the partners that we are working with on the ground is really to dig in and to figure out how best to solve a complex set of challenges that's facing so many economically disconnected Americans. Over the last year, we've started to demonstrate what we're capable of. And this year, we're going to get faster and farther in fulfilling our mission. And part of that mission is really built on the foundation of continuous improvement and feedback. And in that spirit, I'm, I'm pleased to report, as, as President Haynes mentioned, we're fulfilling our first recommendation from the state auditor, the report that the state auditor released in May. This month, we're implementing a new contracting and procurement system that's aligned with state laws and regulations, but that also leverages best practices in contracting and procurement to ensure that we have a fair and robust process. And we're also taking those steps to ensure that everyone who's involved with procurement across the college is well-trained on those new procedures. Today, we'll also have the opportunity to vote on a resolution that builds a path toward a more formalized voice for students through a Calbright student government. This is really a reflection of our commitment to student engagement and the value that we see in creating a strong institutional voice for students. And when we say student-centered, we have a very clear understanding of what we mean. It really means constantly listening to incorporating and designing around that student feedback, even when it's tough feedback. And I, and I might argue that, especially when it's tough feedback. And to that end, we're, our team will also provide an update on what we're hearing about students' experience at Calbright. For us, student feedback isn't just, and it really can't be a static process. It can't be just a once-a-year survey or an end-of-the-course evaluation where things rarely change. It has to be, there has to be a way to be in more constant conversation, learning from students how we can better support them. And it's also a chance for us to provide real-time feedback to instructors about what's working to guide personalized supports and to keep students on track. This year's tentative budget, before you on the agenda, similarly reflects the necessary steps we'll take to advance our progress on the student-centric goals and strategic vision laid out by the board, and also to meet our statutory and new compliance obligations. This includes investments in deepening student outreach to focus on our populations, our technology infrastructure, our workforce development partnerships, and key student experience improvements that better support learning and progression and capacity building to ensure that we do have the necessary resources and staffing, a place to support our growth goals. I wanted to thank, by, close by thanking the, the governor's office and members of the legislature for the inclusion of Calbright in the recently enacted California Fiscal Year 2021 budget, in order to allow this important work to continue. But separate from the budget, and equally exciting, I'm, I'm thrilled to share that Assembly Bill 1432 won't be heard in the Senate Education Committee. We just learned the news this morning. And as you recall, this legislation would effectively shut down our college, and our team met with a number of the committee members and their staff, and our message of why we are here, of who we are ultimately serving resonated with them. I would be remiss if I didn't give special acknowledgement to, to our supporters and partners throughout the state, as President Haynes also thanked, who sent in letters and who made calls and who advocated for our students. A special thank you also to our remarkable Board of Trustees, you all, and our incomparable President Pam Haynes and Vice President Amy Costa. We cannot do any of this work without you, and it's really important to the, to the team and to the college to see that report, see that support reflected. I am deeply, and I want to deeply thank you, as always, for your belief and support in this work. And, and finally, I, I have to extend thank you to the, the remarkable team at Calbright that works so hard every day, and basically just puts in what it takes to make the difficult possible. And of course, to our students like Trinidad and Michael and David, who really are the ones that inspire us every day to persevere through this work.
Thank you so much, President Minion. Um, we're now going to go into the agenda. We have the consent agenda. Is there any, any discussion regarding it? I don't see any hands raised. Oh, Darius, I'm sorry, Darius.
Pam, I did, I just want to add to everything, because in making phone calls around the building to talk about it, I think there was an absence in recognition. I really think we need to thank former Governor Jerry Brown.
Absolutely.
Who personally called me, who made calls to the members, who made very important calls. And I'm sure he called many of you. He was so impassioned. He was so defensive and aggressive in defending us and all the great work that the staff is doing. And I just wanted to say personally, because I talked to him, I know the work he was doing, that the former governor did a heck of a job in defending us. So, bravo to Jerry Brown.
Yes. Thank you for, for recognizing our former governor, because you're absolute, you're absolutely right. Um, I heard through the grapevine, he let, left note stone unturned. He was adamant. He was emphatic. And, and he would not take no for an answer. So, thank you so much for that recognition of him. I see that trustee Grande has her hand up.
Thank you, President Haynes. For the consent agenda, I would like to remove item 2.2 for discussion.
Certainly. Um, but I, so do we have to, do we have to vote on that? I don't, I don't know if we have to vote on that. I don't think we do. I don't think, and I don't see any objections.
Madam President, this is Namita Brown. It can be removed without a vote for discussion separately.
I'm sorry. Would you repeat that, Namita?
It, it can be removed without a vote for discussion separately as a standalone item.
All right, perfect. So then, we, we are separating it and removing it from consent. And with that, trustee Grande, do you want to start that, the question or discussion of that item?
Do, do you want to move on the rest of the consent agenda before we take on 2.2?
Certainly. I, that's a good idea. So, if there's no further discussion on the other items, can we, is there any public, is there any public comment?
President Haynes, there is no public comment.
All right. Then can I get a motion to approve the consent item without 2.2?
So moved.
Can I get a second? I, I couldn't hear the second. From Valerie Shaw. Thank you. Um, with that, can we get a roll call?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Elani Kounalakis. Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
Bill Rawlings.
Yes.
Ulya Tarasova.
Yes.
Sorry. She does not vote. I'm sorry. Joseph Williams.
Excuse me. Yes, she does.
Yep.
He is now, she is now our primary voting member of.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion.
Motion carries.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you so much. Now, we're going to take up item 2.2. So, would you start us in your questions, trustee Grande?
Thank you so much, President Haynes. First off, I want to commend Calbright for suggesting the three new faculty positions, brand-new faculty positions that are likely going to be developing a host of new programs for Calbright. I was hoping that I might be able to get a little bit more information regarding the faculty nursing allied health instructor position, in terms of what programs we think we might be developing in the future that this faculty member will be involved in.
No one on my team wants to take that. I will. I, absolutely. So, you know, I think this came out of a recognition in particular that we're going to deepen our, our work in the healthcare area, and we want to be in a position to do so across a range of different programs. And what's been identified to us by folks on the industry side and And what's been identified to us by folks on the industry side, and most particularly, in particular, the strong partnership that we enjoy with SEIUUHW is a recognition that there's a number of roles within the allied health space that actually are in deep need of addressing sort of talent pipeline, DEI, and shortage, workforce shortage issues for those who are kind of on the, on the front lines of healthcare. And so this is anticipation of a growing body of work and programs that are still to be identified, but will likely cover those range of occupational roles, including, you know, potential roles in LVN and other, other spaces like that.
Thank you. I appreciate the feedback. Coming from a health science persuasion, I know the difficulty in attracting faculty with the credentials that are necessary to hire for a nursing position. And with the number of RN and ADN programs that we have across the state, I'm anticipating that it will be a difficult process to end up getting such a candidate that has the MSN, which is a requirement for a nursing faculty member under the men quals from the chancellor's office. And I was just wondering why we weren't maybe choosing something a tad bit more broader, like health science as a discipline for the faculty position.
I think we wanted to have, because these are permanent positions, we wanted to make sure that we had a very well-developed, well-credentialed individual that could do a range of different things so that we weren't finding ourselves in a position that we too narrowly defined the position, and it cut off avenues for addressing future need. And so for us, the sort of higher-level credential felt important to make sure that we had range of motion in terms of being responsive to what the needs are that were being identified to us by our partners and by folks on the industry side.
Thank you for the response. The second item that I wanted just a little bit of clarification on, when it comes to the offer letter on the Director of Digital Strategy, do we have any sort of an idea of where this position fits in the overall structure of the salaries that are being offered under this particular position?
I know we do. And I would say maybe either Carmen or Marissa would be good to jump in.
Oh, Marissa, were you going to jump in?
Carmen, you could go first, or I'm happy to.
Yeah, so Jolene, Jelena, that's a great question. So this salary does fall in line with several of the other director positions here at the college. And so one of the things that they've done is assess all of the director level positions at, I believe, Marissa, it's like a director level one, director level two, and then director level three within the college. And this position aligns within that range for the director levels here at the college.
How does it align with similar positions in other community college districts across the state?
I wouldn't anticipate finding similar positions in community colleges across the state. This is a unique position that we, is critically important to us both because it's a way for us to develop in-house capability to achieve the level of statewide outreach on the digital platforms that we have from top to bottom. So in order for us to do this work in a competitive fashion with the heavy investment that happens in the private sector, we need to have a much more surgical kind of individual with kind of deep expertise in being able to use digital mediums to reach into local and regional markets in a unique way. And so this position is very much pioneering in that way, I would say, across many of the other colleges. I would anticipate that as we start to develop this capability in-house, we will see a lot that we will be able to share out with other folks in the system who might also have kind of smaller teams of folks on the communications inside in terms of how they might tactically position themselves, for example, on things like search engine optimization in ways that could benefit them. And we're kind of, we're, you know, even some of the strategies that we're already starting to share with colleges in areas like how we are collecting data differently to better support our students through things like CCC-apply, this is a version of that on steroids. Not that I condone the use of steroids.
Thank you once again for the information. I know that with the audit report that criticized the level of compensation that we were provided to employees, it's very important that we continually bring the information that this is unique. It is not a position that's commonly found. It is in alignment with what is already occurring. And just reiterating the importance of these positions for our venture, which is very different than every other community college. So thank you very much for the feedback.
Thank you, Member Grande. And I will, I'll definitely double down on that. Given the high bar that we need to meet on an outreach perspective, even in terms of the, the recommendation provided by the state auditor's office in that regard and in terms of our outreach, this will be a very important position into the development and planning of that work as well, which is coming due in November.
I don't, are there any further questions from our board members? I see no hands raised. Is there any public comment?
President Haynes, there is no public comment.
Thank you. Then can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Grande and a second?
Second, Aguinaldo.
Second by Aguinaldo. Can we get a roll call though, please?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Eleni Kounalakis. Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Julia Tarasova.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you very much. We're now going to move to our action agenda, our action item agenda. 3.1 is the 2021-2022 tentative budget. And we have Jeff Bell as a presenter. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam President. One moment. Just one second, I get my screen here. Good morning, Madam President, Madam Vice President and Trustees. The item before you is the Calbright Tentative Budget for the 21-22 fiscal year. And it represents the culmination of many hours of staff time and analysis by your Calbright team. Next slide, please. The budget represents the first of three years of implementation of college's strategic vision, with particular emphasis on serving the unique needs of working adults. The budget also reflects cost requirements unique to Calbright College. These include costs associated with implementing key statutory obligations and significant new costs associated with the implementation of key recommendations from the state auditor. Combined investments made this year support efforts to achieve the goals set out in the college's strategic vision, including stepped-up efforts to better reach students in the college's focused population, organizational capacity building and development needed to ensure sufficient staffing, resources, and expertise to support stronger student progression and outcomes, and also building the partnerships and infrastructure necessary for stronger labor market outcomes for students. It also includes deepening work with industry and employers, workforce and economic development agents, and focusing on regions and localities to inform the necessary design in high-quality and effective teaching and learning to support activities for our students. Next slide, please. To ground us in our process, this is our budget calendar. And the purpose of showing it to you this morning is to give you a sense of how far we are and how much is remaining after this morning. Today, we are hearing the tentative budget, which is proposed for adoption. Then at our August board meeting, should you approve our tentative budget today, it will be up for a final vote, which we will allow for timely submission to the chancellor's office. Now, as in the prior year, following board meeting approval, we will standardize the format of the budget and prepare it for a formal submission of the final budget to the chancellor's office no later than September 15th of 2021. Of course, this year, we're submitting it in August because our September meeting is prior to, or is after, I should say, our September 15th meeting. Next slide, please. As you'll see in the forthcoming slides, the budget comports with the core principles that are outlined in our Calbright strategic vision. Specifically, be it incorporating feedback from students to working closer to determine the needs of our workforce, to providing greater support to the learner, you will find these core principles interwoven throughout the budget before you today. Next slide, please. The budget addresses strategic and statutory objectives from incorporating feedback from our students to improve our level of service. And it is designed to three, the three additional pathways, applied for accreditation and having achieving the objectives, Calbright is building upon them, working towards continuous student feedback, and moving to the next stage in accreditation and building upon these efforts as we head into the next chapter of our growth. Next slide, please. Now, the next several slides are going to cover Calbright's fiscal 2021 annual and one-time funds. And as many of you know, the college has had a limited amount of ongoing funding after receiving a 25% $5 million reduction in 2020, taking our annual general fund apportionment from the state from $20 million to $15 million. So beginning with the annual funding in Calbright's budget, which was, this slide will do, like most organizations, positions make up a significant portion of our budget. This is common. This is in most budgets throughout the state. The bulk of the positions that Calbright is requesting for the forthcoming year are geared towards serving student needs and will improve student experience here at the college. What do I mean by that? Well, as is evident here on Slide 6, primary additions in the areas such as workforce development. Within that are going to be employment development coordinators, student services division. Student services division is going to increase the number of student support specialists. Learning and instruction. Learning and instruction is going to increase the number of instructional support specialists. And while there are additional examples here, the point is, is that efforts are aimed at improving student outcomes and needs and addressing those needs. And those are the objectives we're striving for. Next slide, please. There are additional expenses that the court, that the college is running into as well. And the purpose of this slide is to give you a sense of some of those other areas of expenditure that are also important to the components of the college. Our insurance costs have increased and a number of other areas have increased as well. It costs additional resources to run the business of running this college. It's important for us to remember that. We're going to travel throughout the state. We're going to make sure that this college is known throughout the state. It's important for us to be out, show our footprint, and be a part of this state like all the other community colleges, and make sure that the students are aware that this is a footprint that we are a part of. Next slide, please. Now, as with the annual funding that we've described above, one-time funding has been geared towards one-time strategic costs focused on improving the services to our students. This is most, perhaps most evident in things like our $4 million outreach campaign, which is intended, as I just mentioned earlier, to significantly increase in our visibility statewide. But there are other areas. $4 million for applied research analysis that'll specifically be designed to improve our students' experience. Indeed, this kind of research is going to be the combination of data, methodology, and infrastructure needed to more precisely test and improve the touchpoints and interventions needed for our students to become more available as a result of the body of work here to improve the students' accessibility in our college. There are additional investments needed to deepen our partnership with our labor market connections and build new high-quality pathways that are responsive to the need of our adult learners. Next slide, please. Additionally, we have $3.5 million for technology software implementation, including for our enterprise resource planning systems, licenses for our students, students for our learning management system, and an additional $1.7 million for additional technology platforms. Turning to capital outlay, we have $7 million satellite, set aside for capital outlay expenses. However, given the recent real estate office space environment, Calbright staff are taking a prudent look at the best approach for being positioned for on-the-ground research, I'm sorry, on-the-ground outreach, not research, and partnership development and expanding geographic footprints for the college in the Bay Area, Southern California, as well as other high-need regions in the state, with leasing space as the best option versus suggested purchasing space at this time. Next slide, please. This slide shows both annual and one-time funds all in one sheet. And the purpose for presenting it to you is to show what the tentative totals will be, as well as to show that the tentative budget does have an appropriate reserve. As you can see in the first column, annual funding expenditures are expected to be 17.3 million. One-time funding is at 42.1 million, for a total budget of 59.4 million. And our contingency reserve at the bottom there on the far-right column is 5.1%. This concludes my formal presentation, and I thank you very much for your time. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for that presentation, Mr. Bell. Are there any questions from the board members? I see trustee Williams.
Hey, thank you for the presentation. My question is centered around basic needs and affordability. Any thoughts, any room for textbooks in addressing the cost of textbooks for students? I was able to do a portion of my bachelor's degree through a hybrid college. All of the textbooks were available within the learning portal. In a digital format, you can also purchase the textbooks. Given Calbright's mode, any thoughts, any plans for the courses to come with a textbook?
I'm happy to take that one. Just to, so I think right now, you know, prior to the fact that students are not yet eligible for federal student aid or, and we're sort of in a pre-fee structure environment, we actually absorb the costs of any of the educational training content materials, including, including some of the licensure costs. And so, you know, as we scale, we will have to think very intentionally about how to ensure that we continue to stay in line with affordability as, as we, some of these costs might be best offset through financial aid or other things. But in this moment, while we're in this stage of the colleges and development, we actually, we take on those costs for the student.
Okay, and so the, so the book, and again, I'm not suggesting that the book should be free or anything like that. What I'm saying is available at the onset of the class. You know, we get a lot of students who don't get their books until two weeks into the class. And, you know, the ideal situation for classes is that, you know, when I start my class, I have my book. That's, that's the main point that I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, and I will say fortunately, because the content is digitally accessed, most of that stuff is covered through the licensing of content and materials that we have relative to our current programs. So we're less in a textbook scenario. I wouldn't anticipate in the future that being a direction that we head in, though we will have to contend with as the college scales, how best to be judicious with those costs in order how best to be judicious with those costs in order to make it as affordable as possible continuously for the student.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. We have trustee Epstein and Hall and then Aguinaldo.
Thank you. So I, I have a couple of questions. One is, I continually grapple with the notion that under one-time expenses, we put operating expenses. And to me, those, that's an incongruous term. Operating generally means, you know, year to year, not one time. And I was wondering if there's a way that we could break that out so that it, it shows that it's a long-term investment rather than a an annual operating expense. And then the other question I have, I just want to know, how does this budget align with what the auditor suggested in that we have a long-term plan for how to spend the, the one-time funding and, and our annual operating funding? It, it doesn't appear like these numbers fit into any an on-term, a long-term plan that we've developed, or if it does, I'd like to know how it aligns.
Sure. Yes. What we've done, member Epstein, is indeed there are costs as, as we were highlighting at the beginning of our conversation, the, the cut we received when we went from 20%, from $20 million to $15 million was significant. And that was, that was a 25% reduction in our operating expenses. And we are doing our level best to ensure that the costs that we have received are staying, that are ongoing in nature, are staying ongoing. We are being very judicious in making sure that the costs that are one-time in nature, that are going to build for the, the college are going to build one time and be building in that sense. And what I mean by that is, if you see operational costs that are in the, in the one-time box, those are costs that are going to be diminished over the next several years. And that is consistent, we believe is consistent with what the auditor had stated in, in that you're going to see operational costs that are sometimes in that column, but they will diminish over the next several years at this time. And that is what we're striving for. Admittedly, it is a challenge, and I, I don't suggest otherwise, to, to remain within a $15 million budget on an ongoing nature. But that is something we'll bring to you in the future. But for now, we are, we are, we are striving to limit ourselves within the budget that we have. We have spent some of our fund balance, as you see. But we have still strived to stay within one-time costs for one-time needs over several years. And those costs will then diminish over time.
I would suggest maybe categorizing them a little more explicitly in how they are one-time and diminishing as opposed to just rolling them into some big whopping operating number that, that doesn't, at least on paper, on first glance, doesn't distinguish it from the other operating expenses. Perhaps you could, you know, break out the, the difference.
Yeah. And I will say, I think Tom, what will be, sorry, member Epstein, what will be helpful is between now to your point in terms of how it connects with the implementation of the auditor's recommendation for November, those are actually detailed spending plans. So when we actually get into more of the programmatic investments, they will be with a greater level of specificity and over a period of multiple years. And so I think the opportunity to further clarify where those investments lay down, how they are consistent with what has been, what was contemplated under the statute in terms of permissive use of the one-time funds around program building and some of those pieces and really kind of what our decision rule is for how we then calculate ongoing costs on the basis of those one-time developmental objectives. So I think the spending plans will further, I think, clarify, you know, breaking down beyond the sort of larger allocations of estimated expenditures for this, this particular fiscal year, how that will play out over time and in particular, how that connects to our overall implementation goals, particularly at most, most acutely over the next three years. That due date is November. So the spending, so that in addition to the budget process, we'll be deepening our work in the, in the area of the development of the spending planning alongside the implementation planning with that November timeframe in mind.
Thanks. So the other part of the question was about how to align with the auditor's recommendations. I think what you were just saying, President Menon was that it, it will in November, but I think we need to identify how this proposed budget is consistent with the auditor's recommendations as well. Could, could someone do that?
Sure. Yes.
This, and this budget does do that in the sense that we are, we are consistent with the recommendations of the auditor's budget and that we are keeping with our one-time expenditures stating, staying consistent with utilizing our resources in that. And we are also, we are also aligned with a plan that is going to be in keeping with one-time resources and ongoing resources being used for ongoing funds to the extent we can possible. I think that, uh, I think that the, the auditor's budgeting process is, is designed for us moving towards a November plan and we are in keeping with that in the budget that you see before you.
The auditor also attached certain objectives to the budget, not just what's on, ongoing versus one-time.
To the spending plan.
To the spending.
And I think that was designed more towards the spending plan versus the budget.
Correct.
So you're distinguishing, I'm sorry, you're distinguishing between a spending plan and a budget, but isn't the budget the guidepost for how to spend?
It, it is in the sense that the budget is for a one-year and I think the spending plan they're, they're outlining is for a multi-year spending plan, sir. And I think that's what we're delineating the difference between is this is our budget for the next 12 months. And I think that, I think their sense was they were looking at more of a spending plan for the next several years. And so we are consistent, sir, in the budget that we have before you that is in keeping with the plan that we're going to delineate this for, for the budget that will be towards the November plan that you will see in the coming months.
So I, I'm going to ask Vice President Costa to, to chime in here.
Yeah, I just want to, and I think Jeff just made the distinction, but there are kind of two things happening on different time horizons here, Tom, which is that, as I understand it, the auditors asked for a multi-year financing plan and there would inherently be within that, you know, three to five different budgets. And so, but to, to Board Member Epstein's point, I think in November, you guys will need to tether back to this budget how it fits within that your financing plan. And I, I do see there are a couple of items that do, but we'll need to have that conversation in November and preview for us in future budgets, kind of, you know, what some of those proposals might be.
I, I think that's, that's absolutely right. And it is, it is a little bit difficult in this moment, pre the establishment of the seven-year for the, the multi-year plan toggling, toggling back and forth between the two.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Tom. Um, so I'm gonna, it's, so it's member Hall, then it will be member Aguinaldo, and then I see member Anderson and member Williams.
Thanks, President Haines. Mr. Bell and President Menion, I just want to make sure that you are supremely confident in, in the numbers you have in this budget in light of the fact that, you know, we continue, Calbright continues to be under such strict scrutiny. So that if a member of the legislature said, let's talk about the number of staff that you want to hire, let's talk about this expenditure that you could sit down and absolutely justify, you know, everything that, that we're proposing. So that, that's more of a comment. But, but on that note about how much is being spent, you know, typically in a business, the, the two biggest items you have for expenses are employees and office space. And in light of the pandemic, I know at least in the legal industry, law firms are rethinking how they're using office space and they're not getting more of it. They're getting less of it. So is, is Calbright also, and since we're an online college, considering ways of, of maybe reducing the space we need for, for actual offices?
Yes, we, we took that very much into consideration, even in the footprint that we, we, for, for example, that we got in Sacramento. There is the, the Sacramento space that is designed for both student support and being available for access to folks who are going to have to go and be available to the Sacramento lobbying community very much minimized. There's, there's space available for students should they need to come in, have access, have questions, serve their needs. It's available for them. We're also thinking along the same lines, member Hall, to make sure that whatever we think about in the Bay Area, Southern California, areas that are targeted in nature, we're going to be thinking along those lines. Yes, the answer to your question is yes. We are thinking along those lines very much so because we recognize that, that things have changed since pre-pandemic. And, and, and people have changed their work abilities. I even see it when I visit, for example, I'm sorry to take a sidebar, but when I visit the folks who I used to work with at Department of Finance, they're changing their footprint. They're not doing things the same way they used to do them. And, and there's going to be, you know, they're looking at different ways of doing business because people aren't in the office as much.
Exactly. Great. Thanks very much. Yes, sir.
Member Aguinaldo.
Yeah, thank you very much, President Haines. I'm really appreciative of slides eight and nine and the, the kind of detail and priorities that they're outlining. I, I think they really set out a very innovative plan for how this one-time funding should be spent and taking into consideration member Epstein's really important points about its alignment with, with other things. Perhaps this is not the right place for it, but I'd love to get your guys' insight on whether we can reflect more of our reliance on the faculty and staff's subject matter expertise and capacity for innovation and displaying what, what these items are. All the bullet points really say with a lot of strength, our, our commitment to students. But I wonder if we can put more of the, the, the fingerprints that our faculty and staff, as the subject matter expertise folks are putting all over the work in those bullet points. Could you guys clarify that for me, please?
I, I'm happy to take a swing at it if it's helpful. I, and I might need a little bit more clarification. So I think these, you know, this sets out the, the what needs to be accomplished. And I think we didn't, with the, the sort of end, the end in mind, right? The end outcome that we are primarily held accountable for, which is what happens to our students in terms of their, their next stage after the college, their, their labor market transition. I, I think it, it does not reflect or credit all of the work internally that goes into that. We don't consider it necessarily about the separate constituencies as much as, you know, this is what the team is working on. That team is comprised of faculty, staff and our administrative team as well. But the, is the, is the question sort of like around the recognition of that or what, what would be helpful to, to understand more about that? This doesn't, this is less of the how.
Yeah, yeah, I, I totally understand all that part. I think it's just recognition sounds like it's not the right term. It's more the, the acknowledgement that there are different teams working on this, particularly that on the faculty side. I just love to see more of an emphasis in, in the language and this could be stylistic. And I'd, I'd love to get your foot back if you don't think it's appropriate.
No, no, I think that the intent was to show that we were focusing the budget. I, I think by, by building the slides in the, in the manner that you saw before you, I think the emphasis was to make sure you saw we are focusing the resources of the budget on students. And, and making sure that you saw that, that this is the focus that we've, we've put out there and that it, it is derived that way to make sure you saw that that is, that is the direction we're going on, on the, on the investments in this, in this area. It was not, it was not intended to be devoid of faculty input. It was, it was intended to be focused on investment-oriented, student-supported and directed towards their success, positive, in a positive light. That, that is the sense.
But I also, I want to, do want to be clear, like, the reason for that is because unlike any other community college in the system, we are absolutely held to a much higher standard. And the accountability for us as an institution is about those student outcomes. And that was, that's not just said in statute. That's been consistent with every single conversation that we've had since then and has been the thrust of the, the recommendations that we've seen coming from the auditor and other places like that. So we are held accountable for student outcomes on a level that no other institution is. I do think it's critically important that we highlight. So we, I think, like, happy to play with the narrative around how different parts of the college kind of contribute to that because they all do. They all, you know, they are, are all mission-driven in that same way and motivated by that same outcome. But, but the, the budget reflects sort of what we are responsible for delivering.
Thank you.
And I, I do want to, this is Pam. I, I would like to add this piece about how we, how we do recognition and and what I, and, and please correct me, Ajita, if this is inaccurate, but we're really trying to break down silos. And so this is, these, these are real teams with very different skills from, so it's not just the faculty, it's the classified, it's it is a lot of people working on, on those student outcomes in a very different way. And I think that our college, our, our traditional colleges are moving in that direction as well. I think we are ahead of the curve relative to how we are designing the work that gets done around student outcomes so that everybody has voiced sort of at the same time as opposed to trying to piece it together. So I think that's the distinction as well. With that, I, I've lost track. I think it's Mr. Anderson, you had a question initially?
Jeff, with regard to, because the way that the, you know, the budget debate that just went on, the opposition believes that they won, right? So just as, you know, we feel victory that we stabilized the budget, they feel that they took 25% of our operating budget and that's a big victory, right? And I know in talking to a few people behind the scenes, their strategy is to go ahead and come back and take another 25%, right? At what point does reductions put us in a place where we will no longer be able to accomplish our goals? So if they were to come back in, in November, December for the January budget and cut another $5 million out, what does that do to us?
It's, it's, uh, it's decimating. That's, that's a, uh, that's a pretty crippling blow for, for Calbright. I mean, I won't, I won't. $5 million is, that's, that takes us down to half of what we once were. And, and we would, I mean, there is a significant amount of one-time resources that we could rely on for a certain amount of time.
Yep.
But we would be relying on one-time resources at that stage to significantly, you know, utilize those resources for our ongoing expenditures. Mr. Anderson, that's, that's something that we would be doing and we would, we would need to be honest about that.
Yeah.
I mean, in the scenario that you.
I was just gonna say, rather, yeah, I was gonna say, I, I don't want us to delve into scenario planning.
No.
The reality is that each dollar that's taken away from this work on the ongoing side will, will intimately affect our ability to serve students well. And whether, whether that attacks our ability to increase our faculty ranks or whether that attacks our ability to, to serve more students. There's a pain and an impact that is felt not just to the institution, but our ability to serve the communities that folks need us to serve in the state. And, and I can say that unequivocally with respect to any cuts.
Yeah, we were past, even with the 50, from the 20 million to the 15 million was a severe reduction in our ability to serve our community. Even that, even that 25% reduction was significant. And we are, we're already.
And Ajita, some of my conversations, you know, it's a self-fulfilling prophecy. They want us to go ahead and move quickly. They want us to serve more students. And every time they whack us, it, it lessens our ability to do the very thing they're asking us to do. So to be very clear, that's what their attempt is. And I think. And I think just all of us, along with the Governor's Office and our advocates in the building, need to be aware of that. And they're coming back at us in, you know, in January.
Okay, thank you so much for
Sorry for the bad news.
Member Williams and then Vice President Costa.
Yeah, I'm still the new kid on the block, so I get to play the new kid card. I'm still trying to understand, like, how long the audit and all those things play credence in this process. But what a lot of colleges struggle with unrestricted revenue. And any thoughts about research and development? Things that Cal-Bright, and I don't expect the answer today, but just, thank you, Sayla. What Cal-Bright can do to begin to invest so that it can create unrestricted revenue? And then my second part is, I'm like, would like a future agenda item where we could really talk about. It just doesn't feel like Cal-Bright is a part of the community college system, the way that it's kind of, I have never seen a college go through a process like this before where the legislator, like, we didn't call for the audit, like, is Cal-Bright, as trustees, are we going to call for audit? Or I'm just confused about how the legislator is so engaged in Cal-Bright operations. I've never seen, you know, I don't even understand, like, where the accrediting process is. And like, is Cal-Bright part of the regular base allocation that colleges get? Why is it separate and different than, like, local colleges? And then what role as trustees do we play in moving Cal-Bright into the system? Like, because I feel like the communications is off. We say we don't want Cal-Bright to be a college where they say, or folks say, we don't want Cal-Bright to be like a college. And then it's like, well, why isn't Cal-Bright doing what, have to do what all the other colleges do? And then there's this audit that I'm just having a hard time understanding it and why. I've never seen anything like this before as, and I've been on the board for, you know, eight years and, you know, a year as a student trustee, I don't understand the process that Cal-Bright is going through. How do we create space so that Cal-Bright can function and just at least get set up properly and then move into the evaluation of its performance? But all of this extra stuff is a distraction, and I don't really see how the team can effectively, like, do what it needs to do. This is really a distraction.
So Board Member Williams, you have hit the nail, the nail on the head. And so your questions are absolutely legitimate. And I don't know that we have the, all of the time to sort of answer that, but definitely they deserve answering. And hopefully, we can sit down and talk more about that. But it was set up this way because it is so very new. There is no other college in the country that's doing what Cal-Bright is attempting to do. And so that, that was a political process. This is just very, very different.
But even when colleges start new centers, you know, why isn't this being done within the system? Like, this is so far outside of anything. New colleges get kind of started or grow, and so there's a process for starting new colleges. I don't understand why this is not going through that process.
Well, I will say, we are going through that process in that we are subject to the rules and requirements of everything that other community colleges are responsible and held to. And we have a development timeframe to get to that level of compliance. The places where it differentiates, I think, are important, though, which is we are held to a higher standard. We are accountable for outcomes in a different way. We are, you know, the responsibilities continually mount in terms of what we are being asked to deliver against, under difficult conditions. And so, you know, it is a, it is a hard question to answer the why it's, why it is different or, you know, why there, you know, why there feels such a deep need to not allow the work to go forward or to fight the work going forward. And I don't know that we've all gotten satisfactory answers to those questions. But I do think that fundamentally, the, our job in this next year, in this next two years, in this next five years, will be to do what we were built to do, to do what we were designed to do. It is to build our college and it is to build it in the ways that are, and the parameters that are set forward for us in the statute to accomplish what the college was designed and set up to accomplish, which is to have a new way of doing things in a way that yields better outcomes and yields better opportunities for working adults who traditionally have been shut out of higher education. So how we do that, we do that collaboratively with the system, we do that collaboratively with regions and areas, all of the things that we've talked about in terms of the important substance of what we're doing. And I just say, you know, I'm happy to answer more of your questions offline. But in this setting, I think it's important for us to remember what we are doing now is we are focusing and we are progressing to do exactly what we were built to do. And, you know, we cannot control how that is received, but we can control how that is accomplished.
So I just want to do a time check. We are still, we're on 3.1 of our approval agenda. We have two more, two more hands up, Vice President Costa and Student Trustee Tara Silva.
I can keep my comments brief, President Haynes, based on that. I want to just respond to a couple of my colleagues' comments. First, you know, why is Cal-Bright different? As somebody who was involved in the creation of it, I think it's important to note that it was set up as a district, but it's really serving a statewide purpose. And so it is really kind of a hybrid. And I don't know that there was an existing process, including the current process for developing centers or new districts, that would have been sufficient. That said, you know, this process, you know, it's just unique. And I view it as, you know, almost like we're almost our own segment. I mean, we are of the community college, but we are also actually quite different with a line item. To Mr. Anderson's comments, I would say, I hear you. And to our detractors, I welcome the opportunity in the coming month to discuss our role in addressing the economic inequities that are invariably going to come out of COVID. We are attracting more African-American students than any other community college in the system. As stimulus checks run out, as the federal funding dries up, I believe there will be a rush of retraining that employees who have been left behind will require. And no one is as nimble as we are. And we are building that, and I think that's a conversation I relish having because I think we're building something new that is well-placed to address kind of these new realities. And lastly, to Tom's point, I want to take it one step further, which is, you know, when we developed this multi-year financing plan, I was really happy to see that in the proposed budget, we have money for expanded outreach. But I think what would be helpful for all of us, or at least for myself as a board member to have, would be, you know, trying to contextualize it a little bit and to see our student journey from outreach all the way through completion and kind of, you know, how we're funding that along the way. You know, the problem with line item budgets is it's kind of difficult to see what it all means contextually and holistically. And so I think when we work on that multi-year financing plan, it would be, you know, really interesting to layer on kind of, you know, what the student experience is and how each of those investments is adding to that and what that looks like across the multiple years. Anyway, that's just my thoughts.
Thank you. Board Member Tara Silva.
Thank you. I'll keep my comments brief as well. As I was looking at the budget, there is an upcoming resolution that I know about in regards to commitment to student representation. And if that will be adopted, there is a commitment to designate a portion of Cal-Bright's budget to support the establishment of a student body organization in the view of collection of student fee at the moment as it is required for ed code. So could you help me understand where in the budget that is reflected or share your thoughts on or plans on that?
Yes, so we absolutely anticipate that, and there is room for that certainly in the one-time portion of the budget as we build out some of the key features of student governance. And if you recall, or folks realize, having read the resolution, the resolution expressly talks about that commitment in the, in the body of the recommendations.
I'm sorry, I lost, my connection was unstable. President Minyan, did you, did you respond to that question?
Yes.
Okay, and so I don't see any further hands. Mr. Anderson.
I just want to make one more comment, and I, you know, I have a tendency to be, you know, too direct in some of these answers. But I want to address Member Williams' answer. With all due respect, we're doing a lot of work on the audit, and we have to because that's, you know, the excuse. But understand, the motivation of the opposition has nothing to do with the audit. The audit was a tool they used against this. This goes back to a political battle that was lost by two unions and the governor. And when that, you know, fight was lost, you know, one of the losing parties determined that they were going to go ahead and come after us and try to close us down. And, you know, they use different tools where they use members to go ahead and do their bidding, they use an audit to do the bidding. But the fact of the matter, our core values and what we are, as I go to Vice Chair Costa's points, the value is there. We have to continue to protect that value and make sure. But understand, nothing we're going to do, Member Williams, is going to stop these folks. This is folks that are fighting a three-year-old battle. They lost to Jerry Brown, and they continue to fight it every year.
Thank you so much, Member Anderson, for that clarification. Seeing no other hands from our board members, is there any public comment?
Yes, President Haynes' guest, Eric Caljumaji, has a comment.
Good morning, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, College President Menon, and members of the Cal-Bright Board. My name is Eric Caljumagi. I'm the Community College Association President, which is the community college affiliate of the California Teachers Association. The presentation that you see before you on the budget is typical of that reviewed by other community college boards across the state. What's atypical is that a more detailed budget document is nowhere to be found on Cal-Bright's website. Please go to any of the other 72 community college district websites and do a simple keyword search on the word "budget." You will find a many-page document that provides far greater insight to the district's finances than can be accomplished by an 11-frame PowerPoint. I encourage the Cal-Bright Board to commit Cal-Bright to the increased transparency provided by a published, detailed budget. Thank you.
President Haynes, there is no other public comment.
Thank you. Then can I get a motion to approve?
Don't move.
A second.
All right, I heard the second. Who moved?
Valerie.
Valerie Shaw? Okay. So we have a motion and a second. So may I get a roll call, please?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Carrillo.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Elany Kounalakis. Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Julia Tarasova.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. Our next item is an addendum to the professional services agreement with Lisa Baird. This is Mr. Bell's presentation.
Yes, ma'am. This item seeks approval of an addendum to the professional services agreement with Lisa Baird with the total values of services in the addendum not exceeding $355,000, which will be paid from the remaining technical assistance fellowship for operating business strategy grant funds from ECMC Foundation. Cal-Bright College has applied for a grant, the Technical Assistance Fellowship for Operationalizing Business Strategy, from the ECMC Foundation. The Board of Trustees Executive Committee accepted the grant, which totals $450,000, at the Executive Committee meeting back in April 21st of this year. The key purpose of the grant is to fund two professional staff consultants positions that can help Cal-Bright College continue its efforts to reset business strategy. Through a professional services agreement, Lisa Baird has been providing services to operationalize Cal-Bright College's renewed business strategy in accordance with the grant's proposal. Now, in accordance with purposes and provisions of the grant, we request to extend the term of the agreement via this addendum to the agreement through May 31st of 2022, so May 31st of next year, in order to permit Lisa Baird to perform the scope of services remaining in accordance with the grant proposal. For background, Lisa Baird has been providing services to the Cal-Bright since July of last year, July 16th of last year, sorry. Her work is focused on conducting research and analysis to inform initial insights into Cal-Bright's future business strategy as well as communication and change management activities that could help align existing business practices with potential future-facing business strategy. The continued engagement
You should check and see which other college that says.
I'm sorry. Sorry. The continued engagement of the current provider is essential to timely and quality completion of the work, including laying the groundwork for developing and operationalizing Cal-Bright's business strategy. I'll be happy to open up any questions at this time.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any board member questions? I don't see any. Are there any public comment?
President Haynes, there is no public comment.
All right, then, with that, can I get a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Aguinaldo, second.
And was that Tara Silva that moved?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Then can we get a roll call?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson. Darius Anderson. Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Carrillo.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Elany Kounalakis. Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Julia Tarasova.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. Our next item would be 3.3, which is the career readiness. It's the course outline of record, and we have Pam Sanborn presenting.
Thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and members of the Board of Trustees. I'm here today to bring forward the course outline of record in DE addendum for WF510 Career Readiness Course, as recommended by the Cal-Bright Curriculum Committee. As you may recall, we originally brought this forward as a course modification for WF500, which was approved by the Board on March 22nd, 2021. Feedback from the Board at that time included inquiries as to why this course, which had substantial changes of hours, content, and name, some substantial changes of hours, content, and name, was not brought forward as a new course. We listened to that feedback and made the decision to not move forward with a course modification, but instead to request approval of a new course, WF510 Career Readiness. The request is to approve the course outline of record and DE addendum for WF510 Career Readiness, as recommended by the Calbright Curriculum Committee.
Do we have any questions from our board members? I do not see any hands. Oh, I do have one. Board member Tarasova.
I just want to emphasize that I think this career readiness class is a crucial class for success of the Calbright students, especially in the light of the pandemic. Identifying and developing the values, skills, interests are basically the key to be the strong candidate when you're re-entering or entering the labor market, especially after successful completion of the Calbright courses. So I'm really looking forward for taking this class, because I myself know that I took a career readiness class, and it has changed my world.
Thank you for your comments, Member Tarasova. I have Member Epstein.
Yeah, just a quick question. Is this course mandatory to get a certificate? Or is this just something that the learner can take if they feel they need it?
Yeah, at this time, this course is not mandatory to take. It will be available to the students who would like to take this course.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from our board members? I don't see any, so do we have any public comment on this item?
President Haines, there is no public comment.
Well, with that, can I get a motion to approve in a second?
Move approval?
Okay, so we moved approval by, from Grande, and a second from Tarasova? Is that correct? Okay, perfect. Then would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haines.
Aye.
Kevin Hall. Elany-
Hi, sorry.
Oh, thank you. Lieutenant Governor Elany Kunalakis. Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Julia Tarasova.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haines.
Thank you. Our next item is 3.4, which is Commitment to Student Representation Resolution. And we have Ted Lie presenting. Mr. Lie?
Thank you, President Haines, Vice President Costa, members of the Board. Calbright College, as you know, was developed to meet the needs of a unique population, and we've always sought to hear the voice of our adult learners. So Calbright is seeking to join our peer community college districts in adopting a resolution in support of a commitment to student governance. The ask is, the request is that we adopt the student governance resolution in its entirety as a sign of our commitment to hearing the unique voice of our adult learners in helping shape our support of their success. This resolution is aligned with Calbright's missions, strategic vision, and targeted student populations. We'll be presenting some specific details on how we include student feedback in Board Item 4.3, but this resolution continues to build on that foundation in informing our support of students. And that's why it's so important to adopt the resolution with the goal of commitment to the recognition of the establishment of a student organization at Calbright College by January 2022. This is a clear pathway towards the creation of a student body organization that will help us formalize another method for students to be empowered to provide their input. In closing, Calbright College is pleased to join our partner colleges in taking steps to ensure our work and empowering our learners in integrating student feedback. This resolution is a further commitment to our inclusion of student voice through the eventual creation of a student body organization.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any comments from our board members? Board member Tarasova.
Thank you, President Haines. We know that Calbright, at its core, is a fundamentally different institution than its counterparts in the California community college system. The students, it aims to serve the structures of its student services, and most obviously, the fact that it is completely online separates Calbright from the rest. That said, there are concepts of California community college system that Calbright, if seeks to become a thriving addition, must adopt. Shared governance is one of, if not the most important, of these concepts. Indeed, shared governance may be the backbone of the system itself. And for students, the most critical part of ensuring our participation as students in shared governance is through a thriving associated student organization, because it acts as the primary source to find students willing to engage in critical shared governance discussions. And now that the Board hears the constituency group reports from Academic Senate and Faculty Association, and with over two years of work championed by former student member Fitzgerald, will be laser-focused on collaborating with the Calbright executive team for the next steps to recognize the establishment of a student organization in Calbright College by January 2022, and by adopting a resolution by Board of Governors, as well as legitimizing the associated student organization in the governing documents of the institution itself. Because it is my dream to see Calbright Student Association report as a part of their agenda in the next future. And I really would like to express my appreciation for all the work that is put into the unique model and forward-thinking at Calbright that really has a student at the center in every decision that is made at Calbright. In particular, I would like to thank President Menon and President Haines and the executive team on the Calbright for commitment to the student voice. We were able to effectively collaborate on crafting this very resolution together with the student leaders from institutions across the state of California. And hence, this is the first step towards empowering student voice at Calbright, and by no means the end. And therefore, I humbly hope for the support of the Board on this resolution.
Thank you for that. I too, I don't see any other hands up. I too want to recognize this resolution. I think it's critically important. And I want to thank the Student Senate, as well as our representative Tarasova, as well as the former member, Colm Fitzpatrick, for their work. This was a collaborative effort, and they rose, we all rose to the occasion, and I think that it is a stronger resolution as a result of that. This is only a first step to many steps, and I feel very confident that we're going to make all of those steps together. That's what's critically important. With that, I see that we do have a hand up from Member Escobar Correa.
Thank you so much. I just, I just want to express my excitement to hear about this development. I know I haven't been able to be as present over the last couple of months, but I'm excited to be back with you all, and it's great to just, to see that this step is something that's being taken forward. And I know that there were a number of people who worked to move this forward and to come up with these creative ideas for how we can really make sure there's a student voice in the process, and just want to underscore my enthusiasm and appreciation for this commitment to the student voice. So thanks.
Thank you. And I would be remiss if I didn't sort of add this piece of it. We, we, all of our colleges talk about student voice, and it's critically important. But we want at Calbright, and I'm certain at all of the colleges, what we want is an empowered and an engaged student voice, and I think there's a difference in that. And so I can say that that's where we are going relative to Calbright. This is, this is about empowerment of that voice, so that it really has a role to play in making certain that the students, that the adult learners are getting what they need from this particular college. And again, I want to thank everyone for their involvement in this process. With that, I want to figure out, do we have any public comment on this item?
President Haines, there is no public comment.
Well, given that, I want to give the, the preference of moving this, this item to Member Tarasova.
I'll certainly do so.
Okay.
Thank you. And we have a second from Member Anderson. Can we get a roll call, please?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
I'll give that a bold, underlined, and italicized "aye."
Darius Anderson.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Jelena Grande. Pamela Haines.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Elany Kunalakis. Bill Rawlings.
Yes.
Valerie Shaw.
Yes.
Julia Tarasova.
Million times yes.
Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haines.
Thank you so much. Our next agenda item is also an important one. It's 3.5, and it's the Academic Senate Resolution, and we have Pam Sanborn presenting.
Thank you, President Haines, Vice President Costa, and members of the Board of Trustees. I'm here today to bring forward the Academic Senate Resolution. On October 19, 2020, the full-time faculty of Calbright College voted to form the Calbright Academic Senate, and on May 5th, 2021, the faculty voted to adopt bylaws for the governance of the Calbright Academic Senate. Pursuant to the bylaws of the State Academic Senate for California Community Colleges, recognition by Calbright's Board of Trustees is the last necessary component to permit the Calbright Academic Senate to apply for status as a member senate of the State Academic Senate for California Community Colleges. I want to echo what President Haines said early in her address about the importance of the Academic Senate for a Calbright. I want to thank the statewide Academic Senate for all of their support early on to us in serving on committees and helping us to hire our first full-time faculty. I want to thank our Calbright faculty for all of their dedication and the hard work that has gone into getting us to this point, and for taking these really crucial, necessary first steps. And with that, I would like to request that we adopt the Academic Senate Resolution in its entirety, recognizing the Calbright Academic Senate.
Thank you. Do we, do we have? I see one hand.
So moved.
Member- Are you moving that item, Member Hall?
No, I had a question.
Okay. Hold that move, please, and we're going to get the questions answered.
Um, without taking a ton of time, I don't understand the process. What's the purpose of an academic senate? And what would happen if we didn't have an academic senate here?
The purpose to answer that question.
Well, that's a loaded question.
It is.
It-
Oh, hell, we'll break out.
As a board member, an academic senate gives the professors a voice in the collaborative process. So, I mean, every, you know, campus has an academic senate. They have a statewide governing board, GAV. So, you know, it's, it's what they all do. And of course, we wouldn't want to do anything that didn't, you know, wasn't collaborative with our, you know, professors.
Okay.
And it, and it is vested in state law.
I see, okay.
That, 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 one of those voices, and it's a critical voice, because Academic Senate has purview over curriculum, and therefore, they have, it's important that we hear from, from them what they think about any number of issues in, 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 in our operations as well. So it is vested in, it's vested in law, but even more importantly, it's vested in the work we do together on behalf of students that we, we hear from them.
So, so should, should we have set it up a year ago, or right at the inception of Calbright?
Well, we had to get faculty, we had to get full, we had to get full-time faculty first.
Okay.
And so, and then that's a process. And then they must organize themselves as a body, and so this, we are on time with, with this resolution.
Great.
The other thing I'll add to it is, it's particularly important in terms of the ability for Calbright faculty to be represented in their statewide constituency organization, the statewide Academic Senate. And I mention that because I am, I am very encouraging and also quite protective over our faculty, and I, and I want them to enjoy the same rights and privileges as other faculty members in the system.
Thank you. We have Vice President Costa with a question or statement.
Sorry, but just really quick to Member Hall's point. Academic senators are a bedrock to ensure academic freedom, and that is really a core principle of higher education in this country. And it became increasingly important during things like the communist scare. You need to ensure that they have autonomy and independence when they are pursuing their academic work. And so, anyway, I just want to say, I think it's really exciting, both the previous item and this item, for those of us who have been on the board from the beginning, because what is a college if it's not the students and the faculty? This is it. And so it's really exciting to have both of these items on one agenda. So kudo to everyone. This is very exciting.
I would agree with you, Vice President Costa. Member Grande.
Thank you very much, President Haines. I just wanted to echo Vice President Costa's remarks, as well as thank our President Menon for being so protective of our faculty. And having this item on the agenda is so encouraging and exceptional. I just, I cannot express enough to Member Hall's comments about what would we do if we didn't have an academic senate? And I would hope the answer to that is, we would get ourselves an academic senate, because to rely primarily in academic and professional matters within the 10 plus 1 is the foundation for which all the work of Calbright will only be enhanced. So I would love it if Member Anderson would defer to me to move approval of this item if he would take the role of a second to on this motion.
I am happy to defer.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Grande. Well, first, we have to have public comment.
There is no public comment, President Haines.
Thank you. Then we'll take a motion from Member Grande, and a second from Member Anderson. Would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Another bold, underlined, italicized "aye."
Darius Anderson.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Enthusiastic "aye."
Pamela Haines.
Another enthusiastic "aye."
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Elany Kunalakis. Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Julia Tarasova.
Aye, from the bottom of my heart.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haines.
Thank you. Our next item is 3.6, which is the Juneteenth Holiday Resolution, and we have Mr. Grady presenting.
Thank you, President Haines, Vice President Costa, and members of the Board. I have the honor and the privilege to present to you today the Resolution Number 202104 regarding the adoption of the Juneteenth holiday as an official holiday for Calbright College. I would like to share a little brief background for the resolution. On June- On June 17, 2021, President Biden signed the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act, making June 19 a federal holiday to honor the end of slavery. While Juneteenth is not a state holiday currently, Calbright would like to recognize this day to honor its students and employees. We are seeking your approval for the Resolution Number 202104 regarding adopting Juneteenth as an official holiday of Calbright College. And you know, all know that attached to the board agenda is a copy of the resolution as the official holiday for Calbright College.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Are there any questions from my board members? Well, as I said in my opening remarks, I was surprised and quite elated that Calbright took upon itself to recognize this particular holiday. So, with, and so, thank you to everyone who was involved in this process. What I, so I have a member Epstein. No, you're on mute.
Sorry to interrupt. There's just one minor thing in the resolution. The resolution does not state that Juneteenth is made a national holiday by Congress and President Biden. And I thought maybe that's something that should be in the resolution, but it's not necessarily completely mandatory, but I just thought it was worth mentioning.
Well, we can make that amendment if there's a motion.
Do you want to wish, do you wish to move that, Tom?
With the consent of the boards, again, it's not mandatory, but I just thought it's worth mentioning on something like this.
And could I just point of clarification? I think feels cleanest to insert in the third whereas clause.
Fine with me.
Fine with me. And I don't see any objections from any of the other board members.
If, language is important, maybe we'll just say, I'll offer up. Whereas United States President Biden has declared Juneteenth a national holiday and has called upon. I just want to make sure we're precise in the language change on the resolution.
I think whereas Congress passed a law making Juneteenth a national holiday and President Biden declared a holiday for federal employees was what happened a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, that's better. That's more precise.
Are we okay with that language? I want to sort of make certain from our lawyer, Ms. Brown, that we're going to be okay with speaking this.
Yes, we're fine. Thank you.
Any other directions that you need, President Menon? Okay, fine. Is there any public comment? I'm not certain if I asked that question. Any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
All right, so can I get a motion?
So move.
We have member Shaw moving. Can I get a second?
Second.
We have a member William seconding this motion. And with that, can I get a roll call vote?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Yet another underlined, bold, and italicized "aye."
Darius Anderson.
Aye.
Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Elany Kunalakis. Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Julia Tarasova.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you so much for that. Our next and our last action item is 3.7. It's the Calbright College Holiday Schedule Resolution, and Mr. Grady will be our presenter.
Thank you again, President Haynes. In this particular resolution, this is in regards to Calbright College's holiday schedule coming up and it's Resolution Number 202105. And what we'd like to do is present for your approval today the resolution regarding the adoption of a formal holiday schedule for Calbright College. Calbright College obviously observes the legally mandated academic holidays as specified under our head code, Section 7900. And with that being said, we're seeking your approval for the adoption of our Calbright College schedule as stated in the attached board agenda.
Do we have any questions from our board members? So, member Grande.
This isn't so much a question as a commendation for Calbright recognizing both Cesar Chavez Day and Juneteenth and adding it to our approved list of holidays. I trust that other community college districts will follow suit shortly, seeing as how we have set the standard.
I hope so, too. Other questions from board members? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Well, with that, can I get, can I get a motion? Sorry.
I'll move.
I'll second it.
So, we have a motion to approve from Rawlings and a second from Grande. Would you please call the roll?
Hildegard Aguinaldo.
Aye.
Darius Anderson. Amy Costa.
Aye.
Tom Epstein.
Aye.
Felicia Escobar Correa.
Aye.
Jelena Grande.
Aye.
Pamela Haynes.
Aye.
Kevin Hall.
Aye.
Lieutenant Governor Elany Kunalakis. Bill Rawlings.
Aye.
Valerie Shaw.
Aye.
Julia Tarasova.
Aye.
And Joseph Williams.
Aye.
Motion carries, President Haynes.
Thank you. I just want us to be cognizant of the time. It is now a couple of minutes before 11. And I'm hoping that we can get through the rest of our agenda and be, at least give us a little bit of time adjourned by 12 noon, if not sooner, but by 12 noon. So, we are now into our information and reports. 4.1 is an addendum to Compton Community College Partnership Agreement. And we have Ms. Connor presenting.
Thank you, President Haynes. We began our partnership with Compton College in early 2020 by working together to discuss and explore equity-focused gaps and challenges within the system that we were both observing, particularly around the transition of adult education students into California community colleges. As partners, we serve very diverse student populations with Calbright's enrollment of 24% of African-American students. However, we still struggle with equitable outcomes as a system. Our work with Compton College reflects the larger, important California Community College System Vision for Success Equity Goals, as well as our DEI resolutions affirming our commitment to equity and taking action steps toward working together to produce better outcomes for disproportionately impacted student populations. This partnership represents a joint effort to develop equity-informed practices to benefit the system. We will document and share with the community college system research-based practices to inform how we approach and implement equity-minded strategies to increase access and student success. The Board of Trustees approved a memorandum of understanding with Compton College Community College District in July 20 of 2020. This partnership invests in new strategies to increase access and advanced educational opportunities for working adult learners. To date, Compton College's faculty has approved credit units toward a a degree in information technology for prior learning in Calbright's Introduction to IT Support Certificate of Competency Program. Additionally, significant progress has been made on renovating a co-located space. In fall of 2021, we anticipate having the opportunity to offer in-person application, onboarding workshops, while also providing academic support services to actively enrolled Calbright students within the region. Today's addendum to the MLU agreement with Compton College Community College District and Calbright College will commission additional research on hard-to-reach working adult populations within the Los Angeles region. The addendum includes a landscape analysis and focus group study to offer insight into post-pandemic recovery for populations most impacted by the economy and the effects of the pandemic. It also offers research on ways in which both parties can improve access for students who are currently not engaged with a California community college. And including, you know, better transitions for adult education to community college and other unreached adult learners. We will also conduct research on how we can develop better intra-system transfer and onboarding processes using technology and high-touch support. For example, the better seamless transition between non-credit and credit applications through our CCC Apply System. And also offering financial aid and assistance to filling out the FAFSA on the front end during orientation and onboarding. In addition, Compton College will establish and facilitate collaborative initiatives related to adult education and Calbright through a pilot program with our Transition to Technology Program pathway. And they will connect their workforce development staff, including but not limited to workforce development deans, American Job Center of California, and Calbright's Workforce Development Unit to evaluate various platforms and discuss employer needs, goals, and strategies for connecting students to jobs. And with that, I would just ask the board to continue to support our partnerships with the system, which is vital to our students in terms of their advancement and continuing their education beyond Calbright. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions from our board members? I don't see any hands up. I would just make this one comment. The work that Calbright is doing relative, oh, member, I'm sorry, President Menon, you have your hand up.
Oh, I'm happy to go next. I actually just wanted to acknowledge the really remarkable work and vision of Dr. Curry, Dr. Keith Curry, in his leadership at Compton. And in particular, I think the excitement around this work is because it allows us to both to use the lever, the relative strengths of each of our institutions around solving a very difficult set of challenges and with a focus on an African-American population and in particular, the emphasis that Dr. Curry's efforts have been in order to strengthen the work of Compton College around support of and advancement of black males and other men of color. So, I just, I want to, I just want to emphasize this is a really important partnership to us because of what we might accomplish together in support of these students.
So, thank you for that. And what you've just said is what I also wanted to emphasize. This is the issue of, one, having African-American students in particular enroll, but then to have them stay enrolled and then to thrive in our institutions is not, is not just with Calbright. I think that we have shown that we have those students and they are sticking with us, at least at this point. But this is a challenge at any college campus in California, community college campus. And so, the work that Calbright and Compton are doing together will hopefully inform what's happening on the other 115 colleges. So, again, this is critically important to our understanding and hopefully with some potential solutions and recommendations that might come out of this. So, thank you. I don't see any other hands raised, but is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Thank you. This is an information item. So, we're going to move to item 4.2, which is the student feedback process. And we have Ted Lay, Mr. Lay, you want to present?
Yes, thank you, President Haynes, Vice President Costa, and members of the board. Thanks for having me here. I want to make sure that you understand that I'll be presenting on the statutory milestone. Sorry, statutory milestone regarding the student feedback process. And getting student feedback is a key part of our process at Calbright in informing how we support our students. We could easily spend this entire time just talking about student surveys and the details there. So, we're going to talk a little bit more big picture with a few areas as examples. The posted presentation has an appendix, though, with many of the details that I'll be presenting verbally. Oops. So, the statutory timeline is for us to show progress by July 1, 2021, and we've been doing this since the beginning. Calbright has utilized student feedback to inform our program and the iteration of those programs. So, I'll first go over some of the history of that and how we've used some key feedback to improve the student engagement that we've already begun. And then I'll transition to talking about some current methods we use to gather ongoing feedback and end with some added strategies we're designing to continue improving our work in supporting students. The summary of the statute is to incorporate student feedback to improve the college's instruction, technology, and student support services. On the whole, this seems like a logical thing, of course, and we like to further simplify it by saying it's learner-centered. And that's the heart of how we want to operate at Calbright, to be learner-centered in our actions. Historically, as you know, since inception, Calbright was created to meet the needs of a student population that was underserved. So, their experiences, especially in the beta cohort, helped inform us of some of the practices, protocols, and processes that we use today. We needed those things to help us with student enrollment, progress, and completion of their programs. Early on, we were able to survey students, use focus groups, census research, and individual interviews to discover what's working and what could be modified. For example, in our first year, four different iterations were made to the Essentials Course based on student feedback. From early feedback, we also began utilizing an integrated student support model. And we created that really to try to have multiple touches with our student with more intensive support within the first 90 days. The instructor and counselor worked together in collaboration, and there's definitely an emphasis on warm handoffs and more intensive student support. In getting feedback that some students were struggling with basic tech skills or language acquisition, that led to the hiring of three academic tutors to support our student success. So, that's been the historical feedback methods, just some of them, that we've utilized. And really, when we move towards what's currently happening, there are three main ways to do this, and one of them is students reaching out to us. And there are three main ways they do that: scheduled, in opportunities at events, and in their own time. When it comes to schedule, that could be scheduling a meeting with an instructor or a counselor. When it comes to in opportunities at events, we do a wide range of events for our students that are either content-focused or that are more social or a mix. And students have an opportunity there to provide feedback, to share their experiences with us, what may be going well, what may be they could be struggling with. And these could be IT happy hours, Calbright. they could be struggling with. And these could be IT Happy Hours, Calbright Cafe, Career Services Events, et cetera. Then, of course, in their own time, students, of course, asynchronously can reach out to us. And those opportunities include direct messages in the Strut platform, Slack messages in our CRM-only program, and also email, of course. We welcome student feedback all the time, having them reach out to us. And really, you know, we get such great feedback. Here's one thing I'll read to you that was very positive. They wrote, "I would like to thank you and let you know that the Calbright program has been great for me. I completed the medical coder program last July and got my CPC certification in September. I've just completed my practic code and I'm working as a medical coder since December. I'm learning a lot and love it. Thank you for everything." And whether extremely positive like that, or maybe things that we need to work on, we welcome all that feedback because we utilize it to inform us. There's also a feedback method where we reach out to the students. And in this way, really, there are, again, three different ways, there are more, but three big buckets. And that's through surveys, systems data, and then conversations with faculty and staff. And in terms of the surveys, we have sent out surveys that inform us about satisfaction with the instructions, student support services, and the technology tools they're using. These surveys can be issued at the completion of a program, the middle of the, of newer programs like CRM, and for alumni who had previously, previously completed their programs. We're also working on an end-of-term survey so that with each six-month term, we get a little bit more information from our students. Systems data, it's through any of the systems we utilize, whether that's Salesforce, Strut, CompTIA, et cetera. We get data on their habits of logging in and completing work. And of course, conversations at events that I mentioned before, and meetings and focus groups. This gives us, these give us further opportunities where faculty and staff can ask specific questions and hear the responses. I want to be really clear that these current methods really go above and beyond what we see often at other schools, especially in online programs. And it's, it's really about making sure that we don't just sit on that, that we're going above and beyond many of the other institutions, but we're always interested in improving and trying to figure out ways to balance qualitative and quantitative data. So three of the things that we're trying to utilize as added strategies are proactive outreach, active listening, and informative questions. And what that looks like then is when you take a look at the student journey through Calbright, you know, as they go through their student journey, it's finding key moments where we are able to work with our students and outreach and ask specific questions, listen for specific responses, and see how that informs us further. So for example, at the beginning of their journey, we could be asking them, "What was your previous school like for you?" And if a student talks about how they dislike school, that if we're listening actively and then asking the targeted questions, intentional questions to gain more information, it could be, "Well, what was it about school that you didn't like?" Maybe we find out that they struggled. So now that gives us an opportunity within context to give them information on our tutoring program or on the support and ways that they can reach out to both instructors and counselors. And it's, it's not just running through a list necessarily, but it's now more in time. Proactive means being able to reach out, not just when, when we see students who are struggling, but maybe congratulating them on completing a module or completing 50% of a program. Asking them questions like, "What's one thing that kept you on track?" Or "What's one thing that we could do better to help support you?" Being able to see that they're nearing completion and giving encouragement and a heads up of what to look for when it comes to the certification. And I'm not saying that these things are not being done, but to be a little bit more intentional in that throughout the journey is what we're looking for. Even when things perhaps are not as positive, like if a student has complaints about, you know, confusion with, with one of the learning management systems, to be able to dig in further and ask them, "What is it about the learning management system that's, that's difficult or that you're having trouble with?" Because that gives us an idea of, is it a technology issue? Is it something we need to reinforce now within our support? So we are able to tailor our, our support and changes according to what the student feedback is. The, the result we're looking for, of course, is balance. We're looking for a way to balance not just the quantitative feedback that, that we often utilize and look at, but also additional qualitative feedback beyond a survey, which frankly, sometimes surveys, students don't always respond to. And so we want to get as many student voices as possible, and that's why the conversations are so essential. It provides that balance and context then. The expected benefits when, when we're able to add these additional things to already a strong foundation of student feedback is we, we expect really to have more timely changes, have more positive interactions, and then be able to come out of the feedback we get with some actionable items. And with that, I'm going to pause, give thanks, and see if there are any questions. And again, there, there's a lot of detail in the appendix, which are the posted, it's in the posted PDF online.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I'd like to see if we have any questions from our board members. I see member Rawlings hand up. Member Rawlings.
Thank you for that. Thank you for the presentation. Really direct, really informative. A question I have that I think would benefit, I think, a lot of our other campuses is when we're, when we're getting the anecdotal feedback through the conversations between staff and faculty, is there a system that we're using to track those conversations and the outcomes that have been generated from those conversations? And if so, what are we using and how are we using it?
Yeah, absolutely. So there definitely is a system, and thank you for asking that. There, there's a system in place, but we're also looking to try to document a little more completely as well. We are able to utilize our Salesforce system to our CRM program to go ahead and, and log many of the interactions as well as comments that are there. And like I said, at the same time, we'd like to figure out a way to further document it, maybe be able to categorize things so that we can look for patterns as well and prioritize some of the different changes that we would like to make to benefit our students.
Super encouraging. Thank you for that.
Other questions from the board? Member Tarasova.
Thank you. I just would like to acknowledge the importance of this item for student success as well as the Calbright's institution as itself. There is a set of challenges that are coming from students of Calbright that might be facing and has the effective communication and feedback ensures that the student voice is heard. So thank you for sharing specifically the example of proactive actions such as like hiring academic tutors as soon as identified. This is crucial. The unique nature of Calbright and online education, we need to make sure that students don't feel like they are disconnected from the system. And with needed support intervention and mainly feedback from the students will be, they will be able to thrive in online environment and successful completion of their courses, which is the ultimate goal for us. And I really like the emphasis on actionable and timely because I think those are the key components after the team gets the feedback. And I, I know you named various feedback sources for Calbright team, but I was wondering if you could pinpoint which method of was preferred from the Calbright students, whether it's email or counseling conversation, or what, what is the most popular choice that students reach out to?
That's a great question, and it's something that I know that we would like to quantify more. However, just from looking at responses, it appears that they prefer that those genuine conversations with instructors as well as counselors. When, when they have that, that type of interaction, they seem to be talking more, interacting more, rather than a survey that comes in sometimes and, and they make, have to make time for it. And they often utilize that, of course, to provide their feedback. But at the same time, when we look at the, the depth of a conversation, we're looking at instructors and counselors as well.
The only thing, I would just add one thing, which is I think that was why we knew we couldn't just do one methodology, that to reach different, different, you know, for different types of information and for reaching different populations of learners, it had to look and feel very differently. And that's why, you know, I think in most institutions, it's often a compliance-driven exercise, that first counseling meeting or some of those other things. And here we're trying to get to, how do we actually build that relationship in a more direct and authentic way that allows us to support that student in lots of different ways and also, you know, allow, empowers that student to also ask for help? That is a big thing in terms of the population that we're working with. We cannot expect that folks will feel comfortable or want to raise their hands or not raise their hand. And, you know, that is, that is our problem to solve. That is not the student's problem to solve. But, you know, having an ability for us to create the right environment for us to be appropriately interested in what is happening in their lives in a way that can help us provide that guidance in a proactive way, that, that's particularly important in the population we're serving.
Thank you for that response. Are there any other questions from our board members? I don't see any other hands up or hands raised. Do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
Thank you. This, again, is a, is a information item. So we're going to move on to 4.3, which is procurement, purchasing, and the contracting handbook. Mr. Bell, you're presenting.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good morning again, Madam President, Vice President, and Trustees. This item presents Calbright's College Procurement, Purchasing, and Contracting Handbook for the Board's Information. The presentation before you outlines the process Calbright College took to meet the California State Auditor recommendations related to procurement and contracting, which I'll go into more detail about those recommendations shortly. Next slide, please. On May 11th of this year, the California State Auditor released a report that determined 2020-104 regarding Calbright College. In that report, the California State Auditor confirmed, importantly, that Cal, Calbright's course offerings are unique and that they are not duplicative of the course offerings of other community colleges in the system. It also recognized the great strides that our current leadership has made in fulfilling the requirements of California's Online Community College Act and made a series of recommendations related to Calbright's processes. And that we're already in the process of taking all of the steps needed to respond to the recommendations. The state auditor requires audities to provide information regarding their progress in implementing recommendations from the reports in three intervals whenever they do a report. The first is a 60 days, the next one's a 60 months, and then the final one's a one year. Calbright submitted its 60-day response before the July 10th deadline. Next slide, please. On slide three, you'll see a full timeline of the recommendations from the state audit report. This is all-encompassing, if you will. I'm not going to go over every one of the recommendations here, but shortly I'll go into more detail about the ones due by August of 2021. And looking at the timeline, you'll notice the majority of the recommendations fall within the deadline of November of 2021. You can see the bulk of that's by that timeframe pretty easy, with the final recommendations due by July of next year. Calbright's begun the development of most, if not all, of the recommendations laid out on the slide in front of you. In our submission to the state auditor, our 60-day response, we highlighted a variety of these issues before you. Next slide, please. Going into a bit more detail and looking at the recommendations made by August of 2021, the report detailed three recommendations. The first is to immediately commence the process of hiring a procurement director with significant experience in the public sector procurement. This is in my area as your CFAO, and we are doing this. The second, by July 2021, to complete the development of a fully functioning procurement process that aligns with state law, regulations, and to the extent practicable, the state contracting manual. That process should include policies and procedures with clear expectations of the work performed by contractors and steps to ensure contractors perform that work satisfactorily before receiving payment. And then by August of 2021, Calbright should prefer, should provide training on relevant laws, policies, and procedures related to procurement to all staff involved in approving managing contracts. Next slide, please. In our response to the draft audit, Calbright agreed with these recommendations. I won't read the slide verbatim to you, but in sum, with new leadership, we established a more robust contract oversight process, which included notification to and approval by the Calbright Board of Trustees in accordance with the board policies. Next slide, please. With respect to recommendations on this slide, that Calbright aligned its procurement processes to the extent practicable with the state contracting manual, we note that the state contracting manual applies by its own terms to state agencies. Calbright is a community college district, and we note that. And as such, it's a local agency. So it's not subject to the state contracting manual. The state, the state auditor did acknowledge this, and by, and this by stating that it used the state contracting manageable, contracting manual, manual, sorry, as comparative data. Next slide, please. Now focusing on the three recommendations by August 2021, I'm going to share an update on what we did to meet the recommendations and talk a bit about the process. I'd like to start with the recommendation to immediately commence the hiring of someone with significant experience in public sector procurement. The procurement coordinator position authorized at the Board of Trustees meeting on April 2021. We are actively engaged in the hiring process for that position and are actively recruiting for it at this time. The position description was in fact posted on the Calbright College website in May of this year. We're continuing to monitor and actively promote the position description to fill the role with a professional bringing in significant experience in public sector procurement. So we're after it. Just want to make sure you're aware of that. Moving to the next slide. Next, I'll talk about the recommendation to complete the development of a procurement process with clear expectations of the work performed by contractors and steps to ensure the contractors perform that work satisfactorily before receiving payment. We've obtained best practices from other community colleges and the Foundation for California Community Colleges, including staff involved in the procurement process. We've identified best practices from this state contracting manual regarding contracting and procurement practices and leveraged subject matter experts and consulted with council to develop a procurement, purchasing, and contracting handbook with policies and procedures that align with state laws and regulations and best practices. And lastly, as I move to the last slide, wrapping up with the third recommendation is to provide training on relevant laws, policies, and procedures related to procurement to all staff involved in approving or managing contracts. We are coordinating with council to conduct training with all staff on relevant laws, policies, and procedures in accordance with Calbright's Procurement, Purchasing, and Contracting Handbook, and we'll do that by the August 2021 deadline. Slide 10, impact going forward. As I wrap up my presentation, I want to end by emphasizing the impact of these efforts and how it will strengthen our impact going forward. It establishes strong oversight over the college's contracting and procurement processes, policies, and procedures. This is something that they had emphasized strongly, and we want to emphasize that we heard it and we're doing it. We create appropriate safeguards and consistency in our contracting and procurement while aligning state law, regulations, and best practices. We provide clarity internally around the roles and responsibilities under the ed code and externally around our processes. We thank you for your time, and we're happy to open up for any questions you may have on our contracting.
Thank you so much for that presentation. This is an opportunity for any of our board members, if you have questions or comments. Board member Grande.
Thank you very much for the presentation and the attachment that includes the entire process lined out. I just have I just have a single question in regards to page 49 on the invitation for bid. When the contract will exceed $50,000 comma as adjusted comma, and then before the terminal comma, it says 96,700 for 2021. Can you give us some frame of reference on, on what this statement is supposed to mean?
Sure. The 96.7 is the maximum amount we are allowed to bring forward without exceeding the amount that has to go beyond the, the board's authorized, I'm sorry, the amount authorized that we are allowed to approve before bringing it before the board. That is our current limit, so that is, that is an amount that we have in between that we can work with. So there, there is nothing that we can, we can bring that exceeds that amount at this time.
It conforms with our current board policies and those are the thresholds and levels that, and the, the thresholds and Cindy, you can speak more directly to the, to the policy itself, but that directly references the two parts of our board policy.
And there's, there's one other piece that comes into play here. I think that, that the, the 50,000 is in the statute and, and that's the threshold for bidding for services and goods contracts. It's adjusted every year by the chancellor's office. So that the 96.7 is what has been designated for the current year, so it's updated each year.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that because I was very familiar with the $50,000 threshold, but the odd number of 96,700 sounded more like something that was given to us from an outside agency. So thank you very much.
Yes. Sorry, I was not clear enough in my response and that I had to be assisted.
Okay, I have a question or comment from member Rawlings.
Thank you. So Jeff, I just wanted to point out, I didn't see it explicitly listed here, but I think as managers and as those who, who manage our contracts are, are evaluating whether it's appropriate to engage in a contract or not, you'd want to also reference Education Code 88003.1. I think you're all familiar with that. So I didn't see it explicit there, and I just want to make sure you're rolling at it.
Yes, sir. We have taken a look at that. Thank you for that suggestion. We are, we are mindful of it, and we will be taking that into consideration going forward. Thank you for bringing that up. We looked that up and thank you for your attention to it.
It's tucked away in there, right? Yeah. Thank you for that.
Thank you for making us mindful of it.
And member Rawlings, there's just one more piece there. The education code section that you referenced is specific with respect to personnel services and contracting out related provisions. The, the procurement handbook is more around the procurement of goods and services. It's less focused on the personnel pieces because they are directly controlled through the education code provisions that you referenced.
Thank you for that clarification. I have Lieutenant Governor Kunalakis as well as Vice President Costa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to recognize the hard work that staff has done in really thoroughly understanding the concerns of the auditor. The staff had the opportunity to really work with them and understand where they're coming from and, and really use this process as an opportunity to be able to, to, to shore up the confidence that our Californians can have to deliver a very special type of Angeforians, and so.
Lieutenant Governor, you have bad service and you've been breaking up and freezing, just FYI.
Well, it seems that we might have lost her. We, we can always come back, keep things back on. So Vice President Costa.
My comments are along the same vein. I just want to.
Really, oh, okay, hold on. Lieutenant Governor, I think we've completely lost her now. Okay, the, the, the beauty. Oh, there you are. Okay. We, we lost the last couple of minutes of your comment. Do you want to just share a little bit more? You're on, you're on mute.
Sorry, we have more than one person working from home today. It's challenging our internet service. No, I just wanted to make sure that, that there was adequate recognition for staff and taking this process seriously and working with the auditor to fully understand what their concerns were and to use this as a really substantive opportunity to be able to take those comments from the auditor and build up our timelines and our goals and our benchmarks to be able to, to show the people of California that, that Calbright really does offer a very specific and very important piece of public higher education in the state of California.
Thank you so much for those comments. Vice President Costa.
Yes, just briefly, I also wanted to thank staff as somebody who deals with public contracting code on a regular basis. The fact that you guys were able to put together the handbook, the templates, a policy and a training is a yeoman's effort. And so I just really want to acknowledge the hard work of Ajita and team on doing that. And, you know, I view this as, you know, part of our maturity as an organization to comply with public contracting law, and so kudos.
Thank you for those comments. I'll just, I'll just tag along and say ditto what a vice president has, has said and, and, and leave it at that. And again, thank you for the presentation. We're going to move on to our last item, information item, which is 4.4, Reports on Contracts and Purchases. And again, Mr. Bell.
Do you want to answer public comment?
I apologize. Do we have any public comment on that item?
There was no public comment, President Haynes.
Thank you so much for that reminder. Board member, I was always doing it to you, so thank you so much for doing it to me. With no other public comment on that item, we'll move to 4.4, Reports on Contracts and Purchases from Mr. Bell.
Yes, ma'am. There are nine new contracts, are new sales orders totaling up to 305, $625,000 before you. They are a variety of contracts, some for assistance with our temporary positions, some including Ms. Baird that you saw earlier. This is regarding worksheet already previously done, and they're before you for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions from our board members on any of those contracts? Or purchases? Member Grande.
Just one question. I'm familiar with CHIA, and I noticed that it's listed under dues and membership. And I was just wondering how Calbright is going to utilize membership in CHIA?
Tamika, are you still on?
Doesn't look like it.
I, I, I'm happy to address that. So as you know, for, for those of you who don't know, CHIA is the accreditation agency for all of the other accreditors. And so it provides a tremendous amount of resource to us also in terms of interpretation, understanding of changing accreditation requirements, particularly because we are seeing those happen, both in terms of what individual accreditors are doing, but also in terms of how the federal policy landscape is changing. And so we anticipate continuing to, to need to, to keep ourselves aware and in front of those developments.
Are there any other questions from our board members? Don't see any hands raised or, so can we go to public comment? Is there any public comment?
There is no public comment, President Haynes.
All right, and this isn't, this is an information item. So we're now going to move to constituency reports. 5.1, our Calbright Academic Senate Report. There is no report for this particular meeting. So the next item is 5.2, which is the Calbright Faculty Association Report. Ashley Odell will be the presenter. Ms. Odell.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for having me, and thank you, Vice President Costa and esteemed members of the board as well. I'm grateful to offer an update regarding the association's activity and its dedication to the faculty and college as a whole. The CFA is excited to just hear that AB 1432 bill has been dropped, and we were very happy to be part of the many advocates dedicated to supporting Calbright through this legislative challenge and the budgetary approval through written and verbal statements. So I'm happy about that one. And thanks for the efforts of everyone. It was definitely a team effort. We're grateful to Robin Devitt of the CTA and administration for working together on establishing an MOU, dealing with tenure and other items pertinent to faculty working conditions. And finally, pretty short report, we're working on establishing bargaining dates in the very near future, hoping for a July 15th date, and look forward to coming back to the table and beginning with discussion items that'll provide support and acknowledgement of the faculty and their significant contributions to the college and the student experience. And that's it for me today.
Well, thank you so much for that, that report. I want to thank my, my colleagues. We are ahead of schedule. We made up 26 minutes plus in that it's only 11:42. So you guys are fabulous. So the, the business of the Board of Trustees is now complete, and we want to adjourn, and I want to thank you all and everyone who participated in this meeting. Have a wonderful day. Have, have a wonderful 45 minutes, y'all. We'll, we'll see you at 12:30. Bye-bye.